Alright, so I'd like to call to order the September four twenty twenty four meeting of the Lower Southford Township Board of Supervisors and ask everyone to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. That brings us to our first public discussion period of the evening. We have two of the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to be recognized? Seeing no one, we're gonna move on to a proclamation recognizing the Harleysville Hornets nine U travel baseball. So here we go. On the, on the occasion of the Harleysville Hornets nine U travel baseball team winning the district and state championships. They have won both the, uh, both of those. They became, uh, the first team in Harleysville Cow Ripken baseball era. At any age level to win both district and states. Uh, the Hornet season provided many accolades, including starting off by defeating their first ten opponents to go ten and oh to begin the season. Uh, they showed true passion for the game and the love for each other as teammates. Head coach Mike Brizzy, Izzy, uh, city coaches Travis Kraus and Mike Butrica. And Ray Heller helped guide the team to their victories. So as I say your name, if you guys would stand up, that'd be great. Teammates Daniel Antonelli, number three. Joe Baines, twenty seven, may not be here. Michael Butrica, number seven. Number fourteen. Sammy Packard. Izzy, number ten. Joel Heller, number twenty one. Hi Kraus. Mason Lee's number seventeen. Neil and O'Leary, number ninety nine. Luca Pinto, number thirty five. And last but not least, Dominic Seig. Those young gentlemen came together as a team and finished the season with an eight hundred winning percentage and a record of twenty eight and seven. So with that, we congratulate you and your accomplishments and, uh, we're doing the proclamation.
Gonna repeat next year.
And for those that couldn't make it, it's on the YouTube. Nice work. Thanks. Good job, Burns. Yeah. Enablers, we thought. I'm literally coming from the fields right. Alright, so moving on, we'll go to the, uh, set agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved. Moved in second and all in favor say aye. Aye. Both say nay. Motion carries. Committee reports zoning hearing board, Mr. Bukie.
The next meeting will be September twenty fourth at seven PM this building. And the, uh, Hecarpus was very well attended this year. It was a beautiful, beautiful Saturday out of the Hecker Plains Farmstead. And I think it was one of the best, best, um, turnout they've ever had.
Uh, fire tea.
Evening, everyone. Good to see you. August power report. We had a total of thirty six calls, twenty four in the day, twelve in the night. Twelve fire alarms, four drawings fires, four CO detectors, three EMS assists. Two building investigation, officer investigation, gas leaks, uh, building fire, one floating on the roadway, one motorcycle accident, one special service. And one accident with injuries. Twenty six in Lower Southford, born Franconia, two in Upper Southford, one in Happy Field, lower Frederick, Telpher and Tom Ensign. We provided mutual aid seven, received at seven. We have total personnel of three hundred and forty six. We average nine point six per call. And we are in service for seventeen hours, two minutes and twenty one seconds. Uh, most exciting news recently is our engine has arrived. So we're in the process of getting a letter, doing tool mounting and starting to get some training on it. So. Hopefully over the next month, that gets taken care of. Um, that's the most exciting thing we got going on. It's the storm of busy season, so all kinds of fall events, fire prevention events, so. The guys will be busy, the guys will be busy, but all is well.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions for Brian? Alright, moving right along. Freedom Valley Medical Rescue Mike.
Evening, everybody. Hello there. Uh, so Freedom Valley as a whole, uh, three seventy six had three July, three hundred and sixty two dispatches. Hundred and seventy four of them were for the Lower Southford station. Ninety six of them were in Lower Southford, seventy eight of them outside of Lower Southford. Um, our average dispatch time to on scene is six minutes and thirty seven seconds. Um, and. We are currently in the process of rebranding our final. So it'll be done probably by Wednesday. Any questions on the report today and given?
And thank you, Karen.
Alright, Communication Committee, uh, Cap.
Thank you. Continue to finalize our welcome letter to be distributed to new residents arriving in our township. Kind of gives a brief overview of everything that. Try to direct them to our website that we found that some residents, as I said, were not even aware at residential facilities that we had as community pools. So we want to make people aware of everything to have opportunities to sign up to volunteer for firefighters, et cetera. Uh, we hope to get that out and be finalized with that at our next meeting, which will be here and on Zoom, September eighteenth to seven thirty PM.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, Recreation Authority, uh, we did meet in August and whenever July's numbers, uh, I will tell you the. In short order, the golf course is doing terrific. The, uh, play is about a thousand, um. Rounds ahead of last year or ahead of budget, uh, about even with last year. So we're, we're doing very well and hopefully the trend continued. So. Uh, unfinished business, we are gonna consider, uh, ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh four and open a hearing for. It's the municipal waste collection and recycling amended chapter ninety five, garbage, rubbish. And refuse herbal one solid waste management section ninety five dash one through ninety five dash one consideration to.
Mr. Chairman, you can just open the hearing. It was, it was really interesting reading, um, to read about trash for that many pages.
Anything was possible, but here we are.
Yeah, here we are. And, uh, if there are any questions, uh, we will have fulfilled our duty to the whole public.
Right. So with that, we'll open the, open the hearing to discuss the ordinance. Are there any comments, questions, concerns? So hearing none, we close the hearing and.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty four oh four.
Moved in second and all in favor say aye. Aye. Both say nay.
And that's what you guys are here for, right?
Here for the rubbish. So moving on, similarly ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh five establishing volunteer service credit, uh, taxpayer program. And the consideration to adopt. So we will open a hearing to, uh, for that ordinance. If there are any questions or comments.
The chairman, just a comment, um. We've been working with the volunteer fire company and other volunteers on this for a while. Uh, we're following the lead. County passed a similar ordinance, uh, several months ago. And we'll be using the same credit process so that there's no additional reporting requirements. And I think this is a good movement forward for our volunteer organizations, particularly the fire company.
I think it's fantastic.
Thanks for all the dessert. Then, uh, if we can send out a note to let residents know too, I suppose maybe we could get some more volunteer support.
Perhaps, perhaps.
Maybe on Saturday.
So with that, are there any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, we'll close the hearing and.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty four oh five establishing the volunteer service tax credit program.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Say nay. Motion carries. Item C. Item C amendment to.
You're not gonna make them stay for the rest of this meeting.
Much like us.
Alright, so amendment to agree to purchase, uh, liquor license dated March twenty one, twenty twenty four, five between Lower Southford Township. And Lower Southford Township Recreation Authority authorization to execute. This is basically a, an extension of time, ninety days. Uh, to allow the state to continue its due diligence as it's required to do. Um. We don't give them an extension. You don't get a liquor license. We're gonna give them an extension.
We don't grant her from the township to the authority. This stuff. I'd make a motion to approve the amendment, uh, to the agreement as stated.
Moved in second and all in favor say aye. Aye. Both say nay. Motion carries. Alright, moving on to new business. Resolution twenty twenty four dash thirteen farm land preservation municipal contribution for the Clemmer Farm. This is a tract.
Backs up to camp, well, camp all over, back to my camp, well, Mark, right?
Nineteen acre. Money well spent as far as I'm concerned.
So I'll take a motion. We'll share at fifty nine thousand five hundred. And without me paying, I know this year. Uh, the chairman will make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty four thirteen, moving of funds to the agricultural conservation usement on the clever form.
I'll second that. Moved in second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Say nay. Motion carries. Moving on, resolution twenty twenty four dash fourteen setting forth the minimum municipal obligation for police and non-uniformed employees. Pension fund for the calendar year twenty twenty five. Because every year, um, about this time, we were the next year.
Chairman will make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four fourteen as presented.
Moved in second and all in favor say aye. Aye. Both say nay. Motion carries. Uh, moving on, resolution twenty twenty four dash fifteen mainland point acceptance of right of way for boring road, camping port, June drive and American way. Uh, this is for the mainland point development. Packaging boots. Leaving prescriptions for those named for.
And Mr. Dukowski, this will give us enough time to get the oil and the fuel.
Yes.
Uh, resolution, uh, make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty four fifteen, uh, kept into the right of ways as noted.
Moved in second and all in favor say aye. Aye. Both say nay. Motion carries. Okay, concert with that is the mainland point approval of the maintenance agreement.
Mr. Chairman will make a motion to approve the maintenance agreement, which provides for, uh, maintenance security of three hundred thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, was constituted fifteen percent of the actual construction cost for this development for a period of eighteen months. I'm assuming we have that maintenance bond in hand.
Oh, yes, you do. You do.
Okay, thank you. I would make a motion to approve the maintenance agreement with set maintenance security in hand.
Moved in second and all in favor say aye. Aye. Both say nay. Motion carries. Next up is the Leta Rock Cross Road Residential Development, seven oh three, seven oh nine, Harleysville Pike. Shahada Leminary slash final plans, discussion of waivers.
I'll report some consultant engineers here for the applicant on Silvadur's project.
Why don't you kind of deploy arrives?
Yeah, the product is a six unit. Village in. Three point homes.
There we are.
Jump. No, we have a good letter is not active. This page is missing. Only to think correctly, I guess. It seems pages under the top of the inside. They, they list because of copy of those sides, it's good pages. Thank you.
Just, uh, southwest of the intersection property. Again, three twin homes proposed parking behind the homes. Uh, the primary access is off of that across road. That's two way access proposed. It's a secondary emergency access proposed. Off Harleysville Pike. That is actually a supposedly relocated residential driveway for the home that's just the normal driveway you're seeing there. Uh, the previous subdivision of that property proposed moving their existing driveway on Harleysville Pike to the south. Uh, where it's shown now just to provide a better. Or a shared access to, to, uh, lots of that subdivision created. And we're carrying that through the current plan, making a better driver picture for that home. So this was, uh, or is actually two separate blocks currently. There's a flight that, like you're seeing, probably towards fight. Where the driveway is posed. Uh, is the flag pull that lot, the second lot, the larger lot takes access from crossroad. So the plan is to combine those two lots for this development. Uh, the residential driveway I was just talking about from Harleysville Pike, uh, will then be extended with violent protection for emergency access. Uh, for fire emergency equipment that kind of doubles as a pedestrian access out to Harleysville Pike. Should future infrastructure sidewalks, crosswalks be installed in that area. Uh, there's easy pedestrian access there. That'll all be maintained by the new ownership, which is supposed to be a homeowners association for this development. Asked by planning mission to reconfigure our original circulation through the site, driving boot. Driveway, you see around the back corner of the property. Just to facilitate, uh, better movement through there for the delivery trucks, emergency trucks, things like that, truck. That necessitated the installation of a table along the back corner as well. Uh, kind of difficult to see there, the kind of multicolored. Areas you see are landscaping on top of that proposed wall. That's what's happening there. There's a stormwater management, sub-surface basin imposed. Uh, under the main parking island in middle stands out as parking area as well behind that wall. And that's gonna discharge to. Bottom left corner, there's an existing stormwater discharge there today. From a smaller basin that was installed after the original subdivision of that lot. So that lot was subdivided from lot in the corner to the MRI physical building. It was installed at that time, we're maintaining that discharge. Not sure if there's anything else. Talk about as far as the site planning goes, waivers if you want. Step through every one of these, if there are any that stick out to anyone to discuss in particular. Or any other questions outside of my case.
Yeah, it would be beneficial, I think, just to touch upon each waiver and what you're looking to.
Sure, I'll write through to the letter. We do. Uh, first is section one forty two, twenty nine, as it do with minimum widths of roadways. Uh, Harleysville Pike is a principal street required to have a twelve foot wide lane for code and then eight foot, uh, shoulder bike lane. We're proposing eleven feet lanes and a five foot shoulder basically for bicycle lane. For Harleyville Pike. And again, that's just the short forty five foot wide essentially flame whole section of that lot that we're talking. Um, Stephanie Butler was okay with those widths, she proposed those.
And that mirrored the existing relative group project.
Pretty much. It is consistent with the walkable ladder rock study that was recently down to. Same goes for, uh, crossroad. That I think is a ten foot wide lane currently, the goal is to widen that slightly to eleven feet. Again, then provide another five foot shoulder beyond that for a bicycle lane, basically. Any issues with that?
This one, um, this one did read, uh, Stephanie's report, I think I said to refer to the traffic engineer and it did seem like this one would be, if any waiver, actually, I would say that this would make more sense.
It's kind of a traditionary, those that we pointed out into the village. So wide blown out lanes really aren't appropriate for this. We don't want people being for there. Yeah, it's already suggested to them. Uh, next waivers, one forty two, thirty three C, clear site triangles, safe site distances. Proposing seventy five foot. Uh, first side triangles at each of these driveway locations, less than required. Uh, additionally, the. Site triangle shown at crossroad would contain a corner of the proposed building. Uh, you gotta see that, the blue line shown. The corner of that building would be in that seventy five foot site triangle. Uh, the reason for that is to provide the buildings as close to the road as possible. We think is in the spirit of the village district, put those buildings as close to the right away as possible, which is what we've done. And provide a little space between the buildings without having to shove that all the way to the right against the next building. And I think we're showing one street tree. Uh, on the left side, that driveway as well, would it be in the site triangle? Other than that, all landscaping and things like that would be. Free of that site right. And again, this applies to Harleysville Pike as well. There's existing improvements on the two adjacent lots within the seventy five foot site trying. But we wouldn't plant or put any new, you know, obstructions to site. In that area.
I, I think for me, it's important to say that this is a consideration of waivers and could be subject to change once the final thing is done and all that too. I did look at both reports. I did have some questions and Stephanie's not here, Michelle. Did you carry comment on that? Any for safety issues, sight lines, anything like that? And again, this is based, once we get to the final, things could change here.
The, uh, link going into the development is, um, partially what you're asking for waiver from, which we have noted in the past. That it's something that we need to change in the ordinance. We'll also note that Stephanie. No concerns with the, uh, site triangle, not one way going into the deck of that first lot, and we have no objection as well.
Thank you. Stephanie pointed out, this is very, you know, low traffic producing. So another fact to consider, there's not a lot of traffic coming in and out of the driveways. Especially on parts of the bike course, that's a. It's actually a single family residential drive.
We should always anticipate people cutting through, but not saying.
Well, it won't happen here. That's a, again, a volatile, volatile protected emergency access.
We're eliminating that sort of.
So beyond the residential. Stone that goes up to that house.
But I mean, it's a scale, like in always of, you have a village, what's the appropriate scale for most of our. A traditional suburban setting.
Correct. I think it's three hundred feet technically required on Harleyville Pike and a hundred fifty feet for both legs of proper. So that's would be way back into the site. So next, uh, item is section one forty two, thirty four E, distance from street intersections. We're less than seventy five feet from another driveway on crossroad. Excuse me, Harleysville Pike, we're less than a hundred and fifty feet from another driveway at crossroad. Uh, this is to the intersections, which I think is what this really applies to. It's two hundred fifty five feet and four and fourteen feet respectively for those driveways. Again, I think Stephanie Butler had no opposition to this.
And just a quick question off of again, Kevin, I think was right, noted that it's a good extent of where the board is now. This is, you know, not voting on any of these. Did the planning commission recommend all the waivers?
Sorry, they did recommend all the waivers additional on, uh, by a couple of fire hydrants. Ensuring that our, our fire, truck turning work, uh, circulate trucks around the site. Our next floor is one forty two, thirty four H. Uh, slope for residential driveway, should not exceed four percent within the ultimate right of way. On progress of a pipe, we are exceeding four percent. Within the ultimate right of way, which is to the back. A corner where the residential driveway, the new driver tie in. For that property, uh, with proposing in six and a half percent, or something around there. Yeah, that's an engineering issue. It makes a better grading scenario in rotation. We have provided four percent stopping within. The current right of way. Uh, next is section one forty two, thirty five feet two, partners should not be closer than fifteen feet to attract battery or altered by the line. The building on the upper right corner, the uniform long crossroad. Is set ten feet from the property line. Uh, parking spot behind that building, which is in line with the garage of that building is also ten feet from that property line. Uh, that meets the zoning code. Uh, it's not the solos, we're asking for waiver that, again, to prevent those buildings from being moved too close to each other.
Is it, is there a difference between a parking area and a driveway?
About that, but they, the parking spaces are needed outside of the garage for that, even if that's why it was too tall to be. A portion of that is a driveway.
Outside the driveway would need a waiver. Someone will come in.
Uh, next is section one forty two, thirty five C, like six sidewalk curves, going through the parking lot. We are providing sidewalk connections. Essentially both roads and throughout the parking area. Yeah, so on sewer and curb for the most part, we're not proposing curb right around where Mike's mouse is located. Um, and up next to the buildings, we're not proposing curb, that's the pay barrier, the new pavement. We think is appropriate for the start development, people getting in and out of there. Individual parking spaces and garages. Don't wanna deal with curb necessarily all the time.
Same though. You might not like it, but yeah, stop with the stop signs.
And, uh, on that backside with the pointer is. Uh, it, it really aids in getting stone mark to run through that area from. You're joining development and down into our stone mark collection areas by not having a curve there. The way the grades work out, seven flat, they're like. That's the reason for that. Uh, most of the. Uh, other parking areas are curved. Other parking areas are curbed. Next is section one forty-two thirty-six F, parking area should be middle of twenty-four feet wide, do a track flow. That loop drag area behind the green parking island is closed at twenty feet wide. There are no parking spaces adjacent to that, well, people are going to be pulling it out. It's perfectly safe to have a twenty-foot wide access there, that's on the peruse coverage. Again, probably a rarely used part of this development. Also delivery trucks, the trash trucks coming around that area, unlikely to be any conflict with oncoming cars, I think, in that area.
Truck turning template run through there?
I believe this is the one that was conditioned of the truck turning templates being revised to meet all the requirements.
So that has not been provided yet.
They did provide truck turning templates, we had some questions on and. Mister Verwanto had some questions about the fire truck actually being able to make a turn.
It was the one that comes around, right, the sharp right-hander around that last building, right there. Then had to go over the curve.
That'll lose everything under.
So driving over a curb with a big truck, right?
But it makes it now, is that, am I hearing that correctly, they provide them?
Next was item eight, section one forty-two thirty-nine B one. A couple of areas where we're not showing that. One is on the bottom section of the wall on the property line, south side of this property. That wall is, the potato wall showed five feet off property line.
Top height, everything.
So it starts. It gets up to about six feet at the very back corner where the outfall stone paper is showing right there. And that's to make that existing outfall work the grading. As you move to either side of that, it quickly produces to five feet, four feet. So the back curved corner section is four or five feet tops, the rest is still two to three feet.
It's a twenty-foot wide road, the retaining wall or guide rail or whatever it is?
Guide rail like fence, we're showing a decorative estate kind of fence on top of that as well. Drop off picture. So to install the wall, you'll need a little more room along the property, can technically stay five feet off, there's no change in the grade. That's the lower elevation side on the, the outside of the wall, backside. So no change in grade, but just to install it, you're going to need to go in this area.
And the guide rail is okay within the geogrid area of the six-foot wall?
Yes, he's going to make sure, yes. With the type of wall that he's proposing.
I guess the, the twenty-foot width of roadway there. With a guide rail and a fence next to it. Is going to make that, I mean, twenty feet, I get it's, you can get two cars past you, there's not a big deal, but. When you've got those facilities immediately up against it, that's going to feel real tight.
I agree, we've set the direct guide rail, I think. Put back from back of the curb, get a little more space in there, does get tight, agrees with that. What they do need, as you may know, a certain amount of space between the guide rail and the, the wall itself. Right, the construction sound.
Right. So, and I'm just looking at, I don't know, dimensionally, when you show on the color rendering, doesn't give you a whole lot of space at the outside of the wall, the edge of the. The road.
Ah, it's about.
Yeah, Michelle, I mean, I, there's going to be a new template and whatnot, but you might want to consider adding a little more width to that roadway on the inside turf.
Where do you mean?
On the green, I mean, you, you can go one way or the other, you can either make the road wider out or in.
You push the hole, is the width of the road your issue?
I'm just, I mean, I'm, twenty feet seems narrow with that type of improvement next to it, Keith may know better than I do.
The traffic will go slow. Another concern is, how are you going to maintain, it looks like you're planting trees between the wall and the property line, right, somebody going to drive a mower around down there, how's that?
No, that's all proposed as a kind of natural. All grass, metal mix kind of area, that's a little bit of this area that won't be to be mowed. Same on the top of the wall, that's a, that'll be considered.
Michelle, planning permission embedded this and they were okay with it?
Yes, yes, we did have, there was a lot of questions about landscaping along that backside too. And that, I think we brought up about all the grass, but it's all going to be filled with. Shrubs, not many trees, if I remember correctly.
Correct, not a lot of room for, for trees at the bottom of the wall.
No utilities except the outlet.
It's not meant to be a grass lawn. And we didn't run turn templates through that, or that driveway here, so.
And sorry, your concern again is what's?
Why, it just, it struck me as. Guide rail fence. And a twenty-foot wide road, it just, I mean, if it's spaced properly, I, I, everything's fine, but, and I know it's not a true roadway. Et cetera, it's a pride, it's basically a parking lot, is what this is, it's not a true roadway when it comes down to it, but it's the turning motion then. Of the, you know, twenty-foot wide, you're getting larger trucks through there, there's an overhang, sometimes it occurs on curves and whatnot to make those happen. Is the guide rail fence set back far enough so everything can flow proper? And I'll reserve judgment, you will have to look at that.
And if, if I may add to you, Chris, about what happens when somebody stops there, running somewhere, leaves their car there, perhaps there's some kind of sign, I would think, imagine.
Yeah, is there no parking signs there, I think? I appreciate the effort to keep it to scale and the impermeable discussion, I mean, I, I understand the balance here, it's just.
Scale, trying to balance.
Any, we're thinking there's very minimal traffic coming through the area. Maybe we could work that out, but. The balance or. Number eight, section one forty-two thirty-nine B one. Nine is one forty-two forty-one, sidewalk borders, curb storms who are shared. Similar to a previous where we discussed. Sidewalk curb storm sewer should be installed on those public and private streets and common driveways, it's a common driveway. Shared use path, shared use pass should be installed along public and private streets, common drivers, et cetera. We are showing, again, a discussion with. The county, township, and dues. Climate commission, we're showing connections of sidewalks or the emergency access as a definitely connection. To the adjacent roadways. Scale of this doesn't seem to be appropriate for shared public access pedestrian path. You know, people cutting through there, there's nowhere to cut to right now, there's no connecting facilities in those roads. I think that's the main thing that we're covering with this waiver.
Again, we typically don't waive this item.
Be sure if you know the walkable study produces further improvements surrounding the village, then that's something to consider, I think, at that time.
Agree.
So next item. Section one twenty-two, one two P, street trees are required along. Access driveways to serve five or more residential dwelling units. We are at six units here, technically there is street tree requirements on both sides of. Both of the driveways, if we can read this correctly. We're asked for the waiver of, I think, eleven street trees.
Yes, yes.
So we're showing what we can along crossroad, there's three trees you see there outside of the site triangle. We're showing trees along the western or left side of the crossroad driveway. On length of that driveway. There's very little space for a proper street or shade tree on the right side of the crossroad driveway. What we're proposing there are more ornamental sized trees, a smaller tree. And we're not showing any large street trees along the highlights will apply versus access. And that's where those living trees come from.
And is there anywhere on the site that they could be placed other ones?
Place some shade trees along the property line there is.
I'd be more willing to, I would be more willing to a waiver location than a waiver.
That's exactly what I was going to say, there, there's so few trees within the site, and I mean, we're coming from nothing, and now we don't have the trees, I understand. Where you're, you want to move that to, but, you know, you're cutting down the eleven, I'd like to see some, there's a reason we have that in there, create the village commercial feel. You have people walking through here, you don't want to feel like you're in.
Yeah, it's better removed because it's unagreed.
Well, there's a base, let's explain the center here, I understand your base and you not support that, you chose to use that basis, but there are other aspects that we could put in there as well.
Planning mission discussing the fire department. For an additional fire hydrant, be placed up at that intersection, and I believe it was the chairman of the planning commission who. Recommended that in lieu of street trees, if they, if we can't find a place to plant them on site. If they were to install another fire hydrant at the fire department's request, they would be willing to recommend that way with that requirement.
I, I did hear him say that he's more worried about the fire hydrant than the trees, and I think it's fair to worry about both, that was something else I was going to bring up later, but, um. And I, I still think we can. And it's, and it's, I'm like, with all due respect, you buy a property with these and that is our ordinance, I mean, you're cutting it in, so it's harder and more difficult on your end to plant the trees. But this is what you have, you know, this is why we have to bring this in, you might have to.
That is a couple of occasions, the two unit building on its own, Lauren, on either side of that. Is there under, under reasons why along the building you can't put more straight shade trees?
On the south side, there's all the utility, all the utility services come through there, I think the last probably as well, like the public utility service.
But wouldn't they be under the emergency access?
No, because of the way the authority and Northern Water wants to run those as separate. Utility services for each building, so you have a bank of six laterals. For each utility, and then they got to be separated by ten feet.
What about the other side of the building, I understand what you're saying. Now, I'm just even saying next to, what is that, unit five?
Not entirely certain where our landscape, what trees there, they were just, being too close to the building. There's an electrical line shown, but that could probably be moved, that's not, you know.
Right, and stone, and that's, yeah.
There's room like between two, two, unit two and three, principally or letter on crossroad, for, that's.
Yeah, I appreciate about the discharge on the underground basin, sure, you said there's already a spillway there. That's from the, is that an above-ground basin, is there?
A small above-ground basin there.
So you're quite grouping the size of this, and you're going to dump it, while you're discharged out, the guy's probably next gate.
So, yeah, it's all right.
Little whale there?
There is a broad swell that kind of begins at that corner.
I'm just concerned about the resident lot below there. And what's going to happen, instead of having some stormwater during a, a storm event, now it's going to go on for days. Is that going to swamp his, is going to be a swamp in his yard now, we're concerned about that. If he's just dumping it out on the ground there, that would go to some sort of a, a swell or a, a waterway or something.
Yeah. A tricky situation, we did soil testing out here. It's many areas in this, you know, part of the state. You know, well, don't infiltrate water, it doesn't seek it soaking in the ground or the clay. So what the D E P has to do is. You can it for a long period of time and slowly release it, a very small underground. You point that may. A lot of water flow out there for a certain amount of time, longer than it does currently. I would say currently. You may still have that issue within that area, I don't know if it's wet or dry right now, I haven't heard anything from this neighbor, but. Any issues with the discharge?
Could be had. Yeah.
Sorry about that, so.
All right, I, I'd like to add the.
So we are managing the volume that's increased, you know, from this development, but what's going on today, the rate and the volume are managed. For all D E P requirements.
You're still, are you, have you gotten through administrative completely? Right, Dave, I would defer this, but conservation district will also have to say on this, they. I think we'll have those similar questions for how to discharge it.
While, while we're zoomed in, can we get a better idea of where the bollards are going?
Where's the emergency access?
Right, to the right.
No, it's only, it's on both ends, where the road. It's right where, where it says eighteen feet right there on a plan, right, it's right below that. Yeah. Is that the, we have all the fire, is that your preferred bollard style? Or do you have one? Okay, perfect.
The one by one thirteen. Full length of a truck in all one thirteen.
So you get it and take it off. Got it.
His insight is a sense.
Need mark for the, you know, there though that. Party or something, there's ten cars on that drive.
Hey, no parking.
And they park from the bollard, I could see that happening, so just some.
No parking, no parking on the emergency access component of their driveway. So, to get back to our other discussion before, between the electric line and the other landscaping up next to unit number five.
Yes.
There'd be some room to be placed some more of your required street trees. I'd request that you look at that.
Basically bring individual water lines to each one of these, instead of bringing a main in, branch off there, up the road. I find that very. Sewer door, it's a policy. You prefer the combined sewer main into the side, or it's been. So the E P. Well.
But they're all individual grinder pumps? Are you individual grinder pump? And there's obviously no facilities at Butterfield Cross Road, right?
There is all one thirteen, right?
Yes.
I think it's just because of the H O A issue where they don't want the. Asia leg.
Yes, and they have been, there are questions about if they go to rental or selling them, and when the authority is on to one.
Dave, this is, D E P is no longer allowed, your ways to be responsible for water sewer infrastructure. But then notified of that, so that's why you have it in the, six individual lines going to each individual unit. Because otherwise, the authority would be responsible for that name all the way up until from the beginning to the end on this private property.
Yeah, well, excuse me, they just did that on the corner road. They're allowing all those to go to one. No, corner road, the corner road, handed port. And, and read the, the Wawa. That new development, one grinder pump, and pumping up to one thirteen, they own it.
That was before this new, new policy by D E P, which just. That's funny about it.
And they said. It, it's a. It's a, they're footpopping on every development.
They've developed by the post office, having them through the same thing too.
All right, too, yes. I appreciate the additional fire hydrant, I also know that we generally have our regulations that fire hydrants are placed at the, you know, certain distance, but also. At the discretion of the Fire Marshal of the Fire Company, so as much as I appreciate trying to waive street trees for a fire hydrant. And is it fire hydrant necessary because of the lack of facilities out there, and if you can try to get, or. I would rather see a waiver for at least a portion of location of those street trees than a full waiver on all those, if you look at that before you go back in front of us. That would be my, just one supervisor's opinion.
Make it two. I mean, ideally, I'd, I'd like to see both, you know. Again. That, put both in there, because again. You know, even if we defer it, or take the money, you know, in, in lieu of the trees, that's great, but this is the area that just has this development, one key is trees here. So, but you know, if we could take a partial, see what you can do for there.
Okay, so we can do this.
Uh, the final waiver on here is. Uh, engineer standard waiver for. Less than eighteen inch storm sewer. Think you shall agree with that?
Well, it's privately maintained, but if that does nothing to do with what we're. Dave was talking about earlier, then, that's not gonna turn into an issue.
Right.
Yeah, I understood that's private.
It's a storm sewer, it's stairs and.
There's one more place.
Uh, last is the preliminary final combination claim.
That will be fully determined by how clean the plans are when they come in.
Uh, I, uh. And I always ask, but you know, obviously, I don't know if you want to commit to, but here's a couple reasons why I want to do it, why, why would you think it would be, do any of you guys think that this is a good situation? A project like this that could have a fine wall? And again, we'll see my comment, Jim asked you on there, that was, what I would say. By how free you are. I don't. And there's many reasons, one, I was gonna bring up. The fire hydrant, uh, at the planning commission. Joe asked you, you said we probably. That's not good, you know, I want to make sure if we have a preliminary, and we say, okay, we can probably do this, maybe we could approve the preliminary, and by the time final comes around, we say, did you do it or not? And that's the situation we're in. Another thing I wanted to mention, with all due respect, you did say that you've got all waivers with planning commissions. You did not talk about waiver number eight, or eight, nine. Eleven and twelve was never meant, now granted, you know, somebody jumped around, guys started talking about trees. Furthermore, I don't have a Valman report for number seven or eight at all. Um, no kind of, but I think number nine, well. These are good, some of the reasons I wanted to give you guys examples why I do not want to see, and hopefully you will consider why we want to check all our ends, why I don't want to see a preliminary final. Waiver. I think it's important.
And I hear what you're saying, and that's why my suggestion is, before they come back, if they're gonna be asking for that preliminary final paper. It needs to be cleaned, that means Michelle and Stephanie and everybody have ferreted all the things we've discussed, and they're all where they're supposed to be, or they could ask for preliminary and leave that stuff open for a final, that's truly up to the applicant's choice. But they're not ready for a vote by us if they're asking for preliminary final at this point until all those things are addressed.
No, and I think that's why I'm bringing it up, and I apologize to asking you, I'm telling you, these are reasons, I'm not gonna say there, and. Another question I have with the sidewalks, I said, uh, number six, I did actually have a question for that too. Um, you said essentially both sides, which sides are sidewalk, essentially both, both? Um, because again, I know that we are doing some. We have the letter off study, you even said planning commission every fifteen years out, I'm not totally against having the right of way sidewalk on Harley's Pike. That might help build pedestrian connectivity for what we have now, benefits with initial commercial, but I was curious, where do you plan on sidewalk? And I do like the sidewalk, I know it's discussed at the P C as well, that you did connect with the, uh, units themselves, I think that's a great thing, you know, people come off through there, I personally would like to see. I'm just curious, you said essentially both, I want to. See.
Uh, I'm not sure exactly the extent of sidewalk required in a typical parking lot. Say. For instance, along the bottom side of the six parking spaces at the island. We're not showing a sidewalk there. Was this. A wasted pay space, not really used by anyone. Sidewalk up the driveway. To crossroad, again, doesn't seem necessary, given that there's a sidewalk connection in part area in the back of the homes. Through the middle of the two buildings on crossroad. Yeah, the intent of, we paid emergency access because it's. Emergency only, no vehicles. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time. Is to use that for pedestrian. Access to my so bike, should they want.
And I just wanted to stop you, because I appreciate that, what I was truly asking, you know, I would personally like to see, and I know we do have the studies, so, I'm gonna comment on that stuff as well. How it could connect, because the letter out feasible study is something that is in the future, we're hoping we can do this, but right now people are living there, you know, and if it takes fifteen years, like my oldest is sixteen, that's a whole generation that could be using these things. I'm in favor of seeing the sidewalk on the right of way on Harley's Little Pike for now as well, um, you know, that, that I don't think, that, I don't see the reason to waive that unless.
Fifty foot, fifty foot, right?
Yeah.
Eight, when you go to the other side.
Yeah, the other side. I, I mean, yeah, fifty feet. I understand, but again, then. On the right of way and on Harley's Little Pike out. It's paid, technically, that's what we, we.
I, you'd say that.
Fifty eight, the eighty-eight ramp and the little section of sidewalk?
Yeah, but. Just an example, uh, I used to live down there. Many, many years. They, on, on one road, they decided, they came up with this ordinance, and he put sidewalks in wherever he put a house. They put a house on this road, and they had to pave it to their ultimate right of way. Then he put a sidewalk in. He was the only house on the entire road that had that sidewalk curb in there. And it looked horrible. Because nobody else had it. And for fifteen years, that's the way that was. And by the time it was, uh, anybody, like. I, I, to this day, I think you'd rather than this easy, only house in that area that has that. It just looks so out of place. Um, and it's a lot of expense to go to something like that, and I, I understand what you're saying.
To your point, which is. Michelle, we just received a four lot subdivision request. For the adjacent property, that's correct? I'm not, yeah, there's a four lot subdivision that just came in on the. Where it says two story dwelling below this, am I correct, or is it further down? The sketch plan.
Little bit.
Okay, but they've got out, they're gonna have a long frontage along. One thirteen, the sidewalk could be installed.
Right, and, and again, Dave, I, I totally hear you, and I get those situations too, I think in this situation, what we're making different, it's just the fact that we're in the village's commercial, we already have, and you can see there's. And I think of like Simpson Berry's, they kind of are doing the same thing, but again, I, people are starting to say, ooh, walk around here, I think that with the village.
It could be a good start, but maybe something for some of this short, maybe we defer it. Until there's a connecting property, then make them.
That's what I was, right, and that's, and, and this way, just look at it, as we, and perfect example, as we did it up on. But, and as we did it up on, uh, Cressman Road, where we did see the sidewalk there, we deferred that. And I think it could be beneficial, that's one.
I just, uh, I, my only question was, if you're, it's a property that Mike's pointing at right now. That just came in with a four lot subdivision, forming with zoning, the old house has been for sale, and then there's three properties basically, and you get to this piece. We would probably have them put sidewalk along that whole frontage. Before the four lot subdivision has a nice stretch of, of area. You get that next piece, and I mean, you're only talking three houses that would need a sidewalk connection then, so I'm not sure, I'm okay deferring, but. It may be something that's even asked for before they're done construction because of, you know, what else may happen out there.
And again, I, I, you're right, that's a great point too, I wouldn't want to throw it on another first, essentially, though, that is our requirements, like, I just would hate to see, you know. The nationwide thing, but I just, and we're not getting there, obviously, it's a very different situation, however. Yeah, it's something that definitely defer if anything else.
Yeah, that's.
And I think maybe even exploring while on this, what the, where we are with the feasibility study, you know, maybe there's a plan, okay, and I have seen some of that, but where it could connect. But again, that could be something that can never come about, if we have an opportunity to have all of us.
Well, if, if you get that long stretch there, maybe there's something we can do in between, and they put that, their section of it in, and start getting, getting ahead of it, so I think.
Yeah, that's definitely, that's, that's a deferral.
The study does show. Second law, crosswalk locations, that go back.
Right.
Points in the village, and kind of anticipated, well, right. We have forty people out to the road. In the first place, you say halfway there. So. Again, we're definitely in favor of the pearl.
Well, yeah, you know, I like you say, Don Jim, I'm, I'm gonna try, um.
The, the other thing about the pearl is, is you have a homeowner association, so it's a little bit easier than going to six homeowner, saying. You, okay, one-sixth of this or whatever, and, and there can be a note on the plan, so nobody can say, oh, man, I didn't know about this, um. So, in any, in addition to the waivers, you can say a waiver was not granted for this one only in deferral, and it is possible that, you know, we can write for that, there's no, at any time, but.
Okay, I did, with that, and, and the only other thing I would advise is, you know, I watched the P C two, then, right on the. The, uh, curving and all for the fire tops. Something closely. And, and thank you for your time as well.
And you.
Sure, we teach this community. Play the one here.
Thank you, thank you, thanks for coming. All right then. Uh, moving on, seven F is the. Request for fire police assistance for Eckerd Auto Body's car exhibit and open house on Saturday, September twenty.
The question to approve, fire police support for that activity.
I'll second, moved in second, and all in favor say aye.
All right, Mr. Commissioner, if there's a rain date, we have to prove it now. Subsequently, David. Whoever, I don't know.
I know they're.
I don't, the sign doesn't say that itself. You can. All in favor, say aye. Let's say nay.
Yeah. Think we ran into that once.
And we can always, we've, we've approved fire police assistance. It happened before.
Yeah, not a great idea, enough. Let's get them before.
All right, then the last item on our new business was, is a motion to appoint Dave Goodman to the Indian Valley Regional Planning Commission, he'll have the pleasure of attending with myself.
Uh. Chairman, I can motion to approve Mr. Goodman to replace Mr. Kennedy, who is removed from the township, as the second rep of the Indian Valley Regional Planning.
I'll second, move to the second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, motion carries. Next up, a, our second discussion period of the evening, if there is anyone in the audience wishing to be recognized.
I just had. Has there any, any, been any movement? Or? The Harley's Little Park, we're gonna talk about that in a few minutes.
Okay.
No one else, we are gonna move on to, uh, do you have need this evening for executive session, Mr. DeCasse?
Mr. Chairman, one more, possibly for discussion, uh, just Dave and Chris, we did get your opinion yesterday with the upcoming appointment. You plan for me? You have any say on preference of how you appointments, we had a discussion about it, it's a spirit of your faith.
What was your discussion?
Discussion. I would like, you know, and I was gonna actually bring this up at the end of the year, the way we did the, uh, before, I like, you know, have people and talking to them, you know, not everybody can choose. Do it whatnot. Um, in the past, I've put down my top three, five come here, and, uh, I'm ready to discuss here. Uh, one of the suggestions that we had yesterday, we was coming to the planning commission. I will say, I mentioned that while I could see that, consider their. Their decision, I would be cautious, not the planning commission now, but you know, in the future, you wouldn't want a P C being biased or grabbing somebody and, oh, we like this person because this is the way we want to go. So you know, I caution with that, but again, I'm up for a discussion, we had. Longer meeting this time, heck, we've had meetings every like ten minutes, I'd stick around, you know, before, after, however we want to do it, but I think it's something that. Only bringing it up now, because obviously the sooner we have some number, the better.
But the full, the full comment was that. This particular time, we have several, I think, seven, eight, nine candidates who are.
Between the highs.
So the idea was that first cut would go to planning commission, and perhaps they send, you know, their top three candidates that they would recommend that we enter. Since they have to work on that board, that board is supposed to be independent and separate and apart from this. That seemed to be appropriate, uh, given, given the caliber folks have thought.
And I would be fine with that, with the caveat that if there was someone else that any one of the supervisors. Also would like to interview on top of that. And I mean, I would be happy to. To do that process. That way, you've got their feedback, and if there's other people that would be appropriate. Each of us would have a say in pulling one or two of those in too, and. I think that'd be worthwhile.
Excellent, that's awesome. I think it's worthwhile to, you know, maybe at the end. About this, we have something in place that is, you know.
As we have, it's been blessed with this many volunteers.
That's. Very, thanks to Oliver, getting that down. Help building higher staff, so.
All right, with that, I will.
And the purpose of our executive session, the technicality. For our litigation, thank you.
We do not intend to return after the executive session.
Correct. Um, and.
We're having, after, it don't need to make a lot.
Well, both of those need to be said somewhere in between those two orders, so.
So is it on me? It's on you, all right.
It's five, I think, that's up to the five up.
All right.
Yeah.
That'd be the same.
It's very, all right, I have two unbelievably fast things, one is, I think, what you take under consideration, that the gentleman who left early, don't get the tax credit, this guy's good. I'm staying for that discussion on the waivers, I mean, you guys ought to get tripped.
Go back, it's retroactive from when you started.
Like John Lee already?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Maybe it was tomorrow. All right, thanks. Second thing is, second thing is, the, uh, the young men who were here this evening, reminded me of my own unbelievably illustrious little league career. And the reason it reminded me is because all the coaches I had subsequently told me that I had peaked athletically in fourth grade.
There you go.
Yep.
So then, I'll move, we adjourn.
So move, so order. Thank you all, everyone, thank you all, thank you for the service, thank you for being here.